Welcome to Punchline Talks, the big interview sponsored by Infoster IT Solutions. I'm Mark Owen, the editor and owner of Punchline Gloucester dot com. Today, my special guest is Jeremy Hilton, the leader of Gloucester Liberal Democrat Party, if I can spit it out, and now the newly elected leader after 20 years of Tory rule for Gloucester City Council. Congratulations, Jeremy, and welcome to Punchline Talks.
Good morning. Nice to talk to you.
Well, it took me four or five takes to get here, okay? Because I was mumbling and stumbling. But anyway, can you tell us, please, just to put it in context, a little bit about Gloucester City Council, the budget, the staff numbers, what are we looking at here, your responsibility?
Well, Gloucester City Council is a district council which sits under the county council. That follows local government reorganisation around 1973, 74. Before that, Gloucester was a county borough. So the services that the district council is responsible for is the maintenance of the parks and open spaces, the refuse collection, the street cleaning, the litter bin, emptying, the licensing, and also it's a local planning authority. So if you've got a planning application within the boundaries, then Gloucester City Council will look at that. It's also the local housing authority, it's responsible for culture and leisure. So it runs GL1 and the Oxtolls Tennis Centre and everything. And it's also really the main local government authority to deal with the place shaping of the area of the city. It has around 200 plus members of staff. It used to have a lot more in the past. There's been a series of cuts in services over 20 years, which is one of the reasons why maybe the services aren't as good as they are now, they should be, and that's the legacy we inherit. We've got a budget of around £17 million, revenue budget. And we're now sort of settling into the new administration, looking at all the background information and looking at the problems we might be facing and looking at how we can deliver our manifesto of putting the heart back into Gloucester, which is about basically making Gloucester a recovering council. We had named it the vanishing council because it was declining and declining and the staff were getting less and less every year. So we need to rebuild the services and hopefully we can do that.
And what is the make-up of the council now? Because obviously the Tories were the biggest council, so, you know, biggest party within the council. I know the Liberal Democrats are, so how many Liberal Democrats plus Labour Conservative make up?
We've got 17 members on the council, Conservatives have got 11, Labour have got seven, and there's four independent members.
Okay, now you've been a councillor a long time, I've known you for a good part of 18 years perhaps, or maybe even 20 years. Let's go to the very beginning. Did you go to school locally? Are you from the local area, from Gloucester?
Yeah, I was born in Gloucester and I've lived within eight miles of the cathedral all my life. I'm quite close to the cathedral now. I have lived in Cheltenham and have lived in Churchdown. So I went, I did go to schools in Cheltenham and Churchdown before finishing off in Gloucester. So I'm local. My family returned to the city back in 68, so I've been here ever since.
What did your dad and mum do?
They ran a hotel, small hotel in Gloucester for many, many years, just a small guest house, really.
Whereabouts was that, Jeremy?
In Kenilworth Avenue, the courthouse, it's now a private, large, private house.
Oh, right, okay. And so you were always interested in politics when you were younger, you know. What sort of got you into all this? Why?
Well, at school, I quite enjoyed history, but I also enjoyed citizenship that we did at school. Part of the studies I did when I was doing citizenship was the local council. I was just fascinated by the work of local councils and how local councils can change and develop a community and how they... Certainly, a lot of the services that we now have today were started often by local authorities before they were nationalised and privatised like the water companies, you know. But at one time, you know, local councils were doing all that sort of work. So I was fascinated by that and really then got involved in politics. My first general election, I was helping out David Holford, who was a Liberal candidate, back in February 1974. And I've been hooked really ever since.
Sorry, sorry, stop you. So how old are you then in 1974?
About 18 or 19.
So 18 or 19-year-old, but is that when you got into politics? Did you stand for council then?
No, I didn't stand for council until 1980. So I had a bit of a break from politics after 74 and spent most of my time tinkering with motorbikes and buying motorbikes and riding motorbikes and live in my youth. And then I got back involved in politics around 1979, when the general election came along and I went to help David Holford again and got hooked for the second time.
So this is actually the era of Margaret Thatcher, 79, she came to power, wasn't it? For the first term of her parliament. So you've always been a Liberal then?
Yeah.
And what struck you for the actual party? Why the Liberals, not, why not, you know, the Tories of Labour or any of the other parties?
It's just the party's philosophy on the individual freedoms and about the support that the state provides for individuals and just, you know, I think it was just the party of natural choice really. And I've always been in favour of people's individual freedoms and about the public sector supporting individuals and the Liberal philosophy. So that was really what hooked me at the time. I also became great friends with David Holford and he was my mentor really. We used to, well, I did get back, when I did get onto the council, together we often bounced lots of ideas through and it was really a good working relationship. I ended up being his deputy leader for a few years.
So I'm very sorry, I don't know David Holford. So he was the leader of the Liberal Democrat Party in that particular time. Was he an MP as well or a councillor?
No, just a councillor. He was the first Liberal to return to the council in 1976. Before that, for many years, we didn't have anybody on the council. So he was the first real Liberal to get elected in a competition as well, not... I mean, I think there might have been some Liberals that stood in the 60s, but they were really Conservatives. It was a deal with the Conservatives, no, he was the first true Liberal to get elected.
Oh, right, okay. And it must have been very, very different in those days, Gloucester as a whole. You know, the city centre, cars were still going through. Can you describe it to me then, what it was actually like? And the sort of decisions and things that you were working on in the council?
When you're talking about it? In the 80s? Well, I think the big thing was the developments which are going to take place out at Abbey Mead in Abbeydale. That was the beginning of the developments of that area of the city. And there was a lot of policy development then by the administration at the time. Of course, in those days, we had a committee system rather than the cabinet and leader model. So it was a different sort of system of running the council. It was quite satisfying really. I thought it was much more enjoyable in some ways for a member of a group of four members. We just had four, but we were quite effective in shifting policy at various times and getting things on the agenda. So it was an enjoyable time to get elected. I was elected in 1982. This is the time of the Falklands War. In fact, the Tories were getting elected everywhere, but not in King's Own. I beat the leader of the council, the Conservative leader of the council, so I beat him and got elected.
How old were you then, Jeremy?
I was 26 when I got elected to the council in... I was nearly 27, by the way, because my birthday's not long after the local elections, but I was 26 at the time.
Okay, so you're 26. Tell us about Abbey Mead and Abbeydale, because, you know, and that kind of development as well. You know, that's a lot of houses, because I came to Gloucester, I think it was 86 the first time, or 85, and then they start, the houses started to go up. I mean, it was a lot of houses, because there was a lot of fields, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, there was lots and lots of fields there. And there was the former Coney Hill Hospital that was there at the time, mental health institution. So, yeah, it was just open land, but that was part of the deal. I mean, the other issue was, even then, we were looking at protecting the retail environment. And it's rather ironic, we, as a council, worked really hard to keep Tesco in the centre of Gloucester. Of course, it became the Wilkinson Store, now it's just a shell, empty shell. And, you know, it's unlikely it's going to be used for a large retail store again. That's one of the issues we're going to have to deal with on the council now, is what do you do with that? It was a pity really, because some of the buildings that it replaced were factually worth keeping. And that was one of the things that got me interested in the local council, because I was concerned with the way the council was responding to developers. I thought sometimes their decisions were a bit too soft and I also thought that we were losing far too much of our heritage. I understand the previous leader that I defeated at one time proposed a knocking down of the North Warehouse, which is where I'm sitting at the moment. That was refused and of course now it became the council offices and it's where the council chamber is.
Wow, I mean, I suppose you knocked down one warehouse, you could say, well, knock them all down, couldn't you? It'd be a domino effect.
It would have been, yeah, and we wouldn't have the docks we got today. It's very interesting how things can change, just the simple thing can change.
I mean, you know, Gloucester itself had all those Tudor buildings and Victoria buildings and it was all knocked down in the 60s, wasn't it, for the Jericho Plan? You know, and the history of it is quite disturbing really, with so much development. Going into this sort of area of the 1980s, again, we used to have cars going through the gate streets. Can you tell us any other shops and stuff that used to be there? Or decisions that had to be made, difficult decisions had to be made in the council?
I can't really think back that much detail, you know, we're talking 40-odd years ago. So I really can't talk about it. All I can remember is, you know, that we had a Tesco store on Westgate Street. We had a Woolworths in Westgate Street. We didn't have pedestrianised areas. And one of the things we were talking about at the time was how we could pedestrianise the gate streets. And what was required was the building of the Inner Relief Road. And the really controversial part of that was the building of the road around the park along the old railway line. And that was really controversial and we had a lot of public disagreement. But in the end, the council decided to go ahead with it. And we've got the road around the park, but it's allowed us to pedestrianise the cross streets.
And the park itself, obviously, you used to, you know, managed to maintain. I would imagine Southgate Street at the time was a lot better than it was nowadays. And of course, the Gloucester Keys were really run down and a bit derelict. Is that how you remember it?
I can remember, I can always remember, you know, walking around the Docklands area and quite fascinated by the beauty of the industrial buildings. It was a real, it was a really interesting place to go to. And I think the fact that we've managed to save most of those buildings. Though we've had problems, you know, we've had an arson attack on one of the buildings, the Britannia, which got completely burnt down before we got, we managed to restore it. And of course, it's been rebuilt there. And we've had those problems. I mean, the cost of regenerating these buildings is really quite a lot. And I can remember, you know, the debates in the council about us acquiring the North Warehouse to move our headquarters to, which we bought for a pound, but cost a fortune to rebuild, I think. And then also acquiring HKP warehouses on a 200-year peppercorn rent. So those are decisions were being made in the 1980s. The purpose was to regenerate this area of the city.
Now, I remember going into the sort of 90s, because I started working in newspapers then. That time I was in the Air Force. I actually marched through Gloucester from North Warehouse there, or from the prison or that North Warehouse, along Southgate Street, sorry, Southgate Street, turned right into Eastgate Street and down all the way to the Brunswick Road. I remember marching there and doing the sort of Royal Persuade, whatever it was. Anyway, going back to the sort of 1990s, when I worked in the City newspaper, there was talking about Blackfriars and the development then, wasn't it? It was a Labour council, wasn't it?
It was a Labour council from the mid 90s until early noughts, wasn't it? And then the Conservatives took over around 2004, 2005, I think. Yes, 2004, the Conservatives took over running the administration at the council. And it was around 2001 that we went over to the leader in cabinet system, rather than the committee structure.
What's your worst, what do you think was the worst decision that was made? You know, in all your time in politics there of, you know, you've been in the council, was it, 40-odd years? What do you think was the worst decision made and then the best decision ever made? You don't have to pick your own party stuff here, Jeremy, just be honest with us.
No, I think the best decision that we made was moving the council's headquarters to the docks at the time. I think that really helped the regeneration of this area of the city. I think the most disappointing, I won't say the worst decision, I think the most disappointing decision that was made was by the Labour council when they carried out the restructuring of the leisure centre. We had a lovely 33-metre swimming pool, which was reduced to a 25-metre pool. And that project was two years late, so we had four years when there was nowhere to swim. And I just thought that there's a great missed opportunity of trying to really create an imaginative leisure centre with a 50-metre Olympic-sized pool. So that's one of the things, I think, decisions which were made before I got on the council that I was really disappointed about.
So moving forward and going through the years and everything else. So you've now inherited, you know, obviously from, you know, from the Tory party the last 20 years. Looking at all the development going on in this city, you know, we've got the forum, we've got St Oswald's, we've got, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on, isn't there? We've got the Keys have been developed, you know, the Urban Regeneration Company have done a great job. A favourite project there that you think, actually, yeah, this was the humdinger. This was the one that's actually made a big difference as well.
I think the establishment of the Urban Regeneration Company really did help because it did a lot of master planning and ideas. And I think that really worked. I think that the big decision was granting the planning permission for the Gloucester Keys. And I think we go ahead with that, we thought it was a really good idea. I think the concern we had was whether it would have a negative impact on the city centre. I don't think it has, though the city centre suffers. Then lots of city centres and town centres across the country are suffering from, because of the change in retail market. And maybe that's something that the government needs to resolve about the way they maybe tax online retail businesses and how they make it more cost-effective for retailers to set up shop in the town centres again. I think the forum is the big brave project. It's not complete yet, we're committed to it and we've got to make it work. But of course, then we've got to start filling in the gaps. You know, there's Spread Eagle Court nearby, really fine old hotel building that needs restoration and repurposing. I think it'd be ideal for city centre living and it'll be near to the housing that's been built on Whitefries as well. So we've got to start piecing together what we do in the city centre. Again, you know, looking at the Wilkinson Store, particularly when I was up on the forum on one of the top floors, there you should look down, this is a great, big, ugly brick building, just a big shed, and you just think, we really don't need that sort of building in the city centre. Maybe we could better use that land for other purposes, probably city centre living, maybe some office accommodation, some, something which is, will bring more life back into that part of the city. But we've got to start building all that all around. And of course, the other area of the city that is of concern to mine, to me, is the area around Eastgate Street, where the Odeon Cinema is, you know, the old co-op store on the corner of Brunswick Road. I remember working in co-op when I was 16. It was a bit like Grace Brothers. It was quite amusing, actually, when you watch the Grace Brothers, how you're being served. You know, the layout of the store was very much like the co-op store was.
Yeah, I remember that as well. And it was, are you talking about the old Argos building now?
That's the Argos.
Yeah, and before, yeah, before that was a co-op and before that was something else as well, wasn't it? It's been a right old mix of different... And you are right, that bit of the city is pretty run down too. I mean, there are, I mean, this is the problem. I mean, you've inherited, well, not inherited, because that's not fair either, but it's a big job. There's lots going on, isn't there? Where do you start?
We've just got finished off the projects that have been started and you've just got to move on to the next project. And it's, you know, I think from the days of the 1980s, you know, the city council's attitude towards refurbishment, restoration and reuse of the buildings of note is obvious. And we've been quite successful, all parts have been quite successful in developing that. But we just need to continue to do that. We need to make sure that we protect those buildings of quality, even if they might be run down and they look like they should be pulled down. So you've just got to have some imagination and carry out the restoration, regeneration of those areas. And we've just got to continue and we've got to develop the city in a way that's going to work for the 21st century and the way people work. But I was really pleased that the former Debenhams building was grabbed by the university and that it's been restored. I mean, at one time, there's a risk that it would have been just demolished. There were people that were quite happy to have it demolished and have the site redeveloped. Well, I think you can see from the work the university's been doing, it's not finished yet, but it shows you what a handsome building that was. That was the old Bon Marche, of course, when it was, before it became the Debenhams store. I do miss the store there, though. It was a good place to go and shop.
Yeah, without a shadow of a doubt, it was a great shop, but unfortunately, not enough of us went there. And, you know, that is the problem with modern retail now, isn't it? Going into all these sort of different problems, what indoor market, Gloucester indoor market? Because that's really, really run down now. Is it being, is it being slowly emptied, Jeremy? Is that the plan in order to sort of get white fries up and running or grey fries up and running, always get mixed up?
Well, the council has put in a bid for levelling up funding, which is about 11 million, which Michael Gove at the last shout approved. But we've asked the government what the situation is and they said, well, the Whitehall, what's the situation, and they said, wait until the new government. So at the moment, we don't know whether we've absolutely got the 11 million pounds. But one of the things would be to refit and move the indoor market from a location where it is to a location better suited in the escape shopping centre. I mean, one of the problems of the escape market was it's tapped at the back end. So you have to make an effort to go to it and people don't walk through it. And when you've got a small store, you want people walking by all the time. Because I can remember back in the 60s, when I was a kid, going into the old escape market, which is right off the frontage of Eastgate Street, and it was really high. It was busy and all the retailers there, the storeholders were doing great business. And you see that on the continent, that they do do good business, but you've got to have passing trade. So you've got to have people walking through all the time. It's no good having people walked halfway through, and then they just don't go to the end of the store or the end of the escape market. So we've got to, we've got to try and do something about that and do something for our small independent traders.
So what are you going to do then, Jeremy? Well, how can you help, how can you help the independent retailers getting into the city? You know, would you look at business rates, would you give them incentives? You know, what type of thing are you thinking of?
Well, I think what we need to do is deliver the escape market, the regeneration of the escape shopping centre and the replacing of the indoor market or moving the indoor market to a better location, so there's a larger footfall and it's a much busier place. And then when you're letting out the stores to the storeholders, they're more confident. They're going to get a lot more business than they probably get at the moment where they're tucked away. But that's, I mean, we're waiting on, we're waiting on the new government to confirm whether or not we got this levelling up grant of 11 million pounds. If we don't get it, that puts the project back.
And one of the biggest problems that we have in the city, obviously, or perceived to be, is the budget being eaten up, a lot of money being up by homelessness and, you know, people who unfortunately, you know, haven't got anywhere to live and they're being put up in hotels. That is a responsibility of the city council, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, have you sort of, you know, has your cabinet had a chance to look at that? Because there are so many hotels being used up and about, you know, getting affordable housing for people?
No, we're looking at that and we're following on with a project which the former council administration started, which is to purchase a number of residential properties to house people that are currently in hotel accommodation. So we're going to progress that. But one of the aims of the Lib Dem administration is to build more properties for affordable rent, to be rented to where the landlord is, the city council. So we're going to restart that project. Well, at the moment, of course, you know, the former administration sold off its housing stock, four and a half thousand houses, effectively to clear its debt to Gloucester City Homes. So it's now an independent, which is a social landlord, just as rooftop housing is, just as the Guinness partnership are, so they're not the responsibility of the council. But we're going to be going back into that. And we hope that maybe we'll get a better support from the new government as well. It seems to be more interested in building more homes and building more social homes.
Yeah, I mean, you've got all those homes going in, and back of St Oswald's as well, obviously, even behind the Tesco, that's a good whack, isn't it? 300, 400 homes going there as well. And let's just go back to yourself, because a lot of people don't know that you actually run a little business. Sorry, I didn't mean to say little, but you run a business for a while as well. Can you tell us a bit about that?
Well, I did work for the Covert Search Establishment, the National Coal Hall, for many years as a scientific technician. I ended up on fluidised bed combustion and then I've run my own business. And more lately, up until about 2007, I ran a import business importing hand graphs from Indonesia, brought containers in and then wholesale to retailers in the UK and also retailers in Europe.
And what's the sort of biggest part that you enjoyed about doing that business?
Well, bad going out to Indonesia to go and do the buying. It was hard work, it was interesting. The big, most difficult thing about it is that others just buying up from the same source that you've got and you're not having sort of a control over the product in a way that you might do with some manufactured goods. Therefore, you would have competition from somebody else who was bringing in the same thing. But it was, it was an interesting time in my life, which is mostly during the 1990s and the early 2000s. But I got involved in politics again. I got hooked on politics and stood for election, stood for election in 2001.
Right, okay, so you've been a politician for how long now? 47 years?
I've done, I've done more than, about 32 years, I can't remember, I've got to do the calculation again. About 32 years on both authorities with a gap in that period. But I've been back on, I've been back in local government. I got, I got elected in 2001, I came back and we gained a seat I previously held.
Well, I've got to ask you, because we are already running out of time unfortunately, Jeremy, because I try and keep these shows to around half an hour. So just very quickly, before I move into the very last question, which is your top three business tips. Have you got any hobbies at all? What do you do to relax?
What do I do to relax? Well, I'm interested in current affairs anyway. So sitting there, I'm watching BBC News 24, seems to be something I get hooked on. I've got a dog that I need to take for a walk. I like to do some travelling overseas. I did try to, attempted to learn another language, I'm not very good at it. And I quite like wandering around cities in Europe and all places around the world and just taking photographs of the sights that I see and particularly public art, which is something I want to really do to improve in Gloucester. Because if you go to a place, one of the great things about walking around a place is just viewing the public art that's on display in various places and seeing the way those communities show off their city. And I think we should do, should be much more effective in doing that in Gloucester as well.
So what would your, what would your lasting legacy be, Jeremy? What would you, what would you like? You know, at the end of your sort of tender or, or, you know, time in politics, what would you like people to see or what you have achieved? What would that be, that one thing?
I don't know what that one thing is. I'm always very proud of the, of the pedestrian crossing. I got put down King's Own Road back in the nineteen eighties and the, and how I managed to achieve it. It was rather, particularly at a time when it was very difficult to get things through the Planning and Transportation Committee, but I managed to achieve it and that was a but there's lots of small things, big things I've done. I, you know, I can't really name anyone at the moment. Just do a good job, I think, is the importance. Just go out there and do what you can. I think a former Conservative leader told David Holford years ago, you know, you can't change the world, and he's probably right. But enjoy the successes you have in influence and what happens and that's all you can really do.
Okay, Jeremy, we're running out of time. So could you tell us please, so what's your top three business tips?
Well, I think the top, the top one is you've got to look after your customers. And the second one is never oversell to them and underachieve. Much better to unders, to oversell, as I say, and underachieve, it's much better to undersell and overachieve. Because reputation's important. People say that they did even better than they said they were going to do. What people do not like if the customer is for you to tell them you're going to do this and not achieve it. I think it's an important thing that you're always careful. You need to keep an eye on your balance sheet. And, and you've got to make sure that you don't, that your supplies, you've got to keep an eye on those. Make sure that your supply is kept to the minimum for what you need and make sure you don't borrow too much money. I think that's an important one as well. But the cash flow was, of course, is the most difficult thing for every business. Never forget that.
No, without a shadow of a doubt, cash flow is king, as I say. Well, unfortunately, we've run out of time. I'd just like to thank you, Jeremy, for, you know, joining us today at Punchline Talks. I'd like to thank our wonderful sponsors, Infostar IT Solutions, also for everybody who's watching. If you like the show, please like, share and subscribe. And we'll be back again very soon, but please remember, it's all in the Punchline. Thank you. Bye, Jeremy.